I would like to call to order the Municipal Planning Commission meeting, April 12, 2016, at 7:13 PM. First item on the agenda is opening 1.1, Prayer and Pledge. Mayor Carroll, would you say the prayer for us, please?
Sure. Please bow. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day that you've given us. Thank you for giving us such a wonderful community to live in and call home. Thanks, thank you for all the residents and the citizens that are willing to volunteer and serve this community. Please guide and direct us as we make the decisions tonight, that they are good for the city of Fairview. Please be with us, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of the agenda.
Approved.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, citizens' comments.
Madam Chairperson, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Thank you, no citizens' comments. Number four, approval of the minutes, 4.1, March 8, 2016, regular meeting.
Approved. Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I think there may need to be one item under 8.2. About two-thirds of the way down, there's a center, or I guess there's a line that starts with Mitchell. Says Mitchell questions whether it is still the intent to locate drip fields in the front yards. I believe, that may have been what he said, but I believe the intention was to ask if septic tanks would be located in the front.
You are correct. It should be septic tanks. Thank you. If everyone will please turn their mics on. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, recommendations, 5.1, discuss or take action on rezoning property, including preliminary master development plan, off Cox Pike from RS 40 to R 15 CG, mixed-use PUD residential, commercial, general, mixed-use plan unit development. MAP 43 parcel 30.01 and 31.00, 32.19 acres, Denny Proctor and Welch owners. This was from, taken to the Board of Commissioners. Beaut made a motion to deny the request based on desire to see the property at RS 20, density second by Sutton. Mangrum recused himself from the vote. All were in favor. This is a negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Number six, bonds. There are none. Number seven, old business. There is no old business tonight. Number eight, new business, 8.1, discuss and/or take action on infrastructure construction plans for Cowes Creek Phase 2, Section 2. MAP 47 parcel 32.00, 14.07 acres, zoned R 20, Kelly Shiber owner.
I'd like to accuse myself of voting on this.
Mr. Mangrum is recusing himself?
There is a city staff report for this item. I'll go ahead and read that at this time. No revised plans were provided to staff at the time this report was generated. Revised plans are reviewed against the initial staff comments to verify if any remaining comments are to be placed on the staff report. Without the revised plans, a verification review could not be conducted. A copy of the initial review comments that were issued to the applicant are attached for your reference.
For the record, I'd like to show that Mr. Kelly Shiber's here.
Will, does, sorry, does this, with the staff review, does this mean you weren't able to review these plans?
At the time that this report was generated, I was not. I received an email of the revised plans this afternoon, and have since had a chance to review the revised plans. I have some minor adjustments that I would recommend for some of the drainage patterns, but other than that, it does appear to have addressed the initial staff review comments that were given to the applicant, March 25, as you have a copy of those in my report, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we defer this till next month, when everybody has proper time to review. I just got these plans this evening as well. Feel very uncomfortable voting on something without review.
Second motion.
We have a first and a second to defer. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.2, discuss and/or take action on infrastructure construction plans for Spring Station. MAP 42 parcel 28.03, 15.49 acres, zoned R 20, PUD overlay, Benny Sullivan owner. There's someone here representing? Thank you.
Do we have comments on this one?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Beato, would you like to read the staff report?
Yes. Excuse me. There's one comment from city staff referencing item 8.2. Per the zoning ordinance, within 60 days of the BOC adopting a PUD rezoning, owner shall record with the Register of Deeds a boundary plat or suitably comparable document identifying that the affected properties are subject to the provisions of a PUD overlay district. Any off-site improvements and special conditions to which the development is subject shall be recorded with or on such plat. This document should be submitted to city staff for review and comment prior to being recorded.
Has that all been ironed out?
Yes, sir. We've, it's now deeded to the city of Fairview. It's, after 15 or 16 years, it's now our road. We've been maintaining and taking care of it all these years, but it was something that fell through the cracks many years ago. Wasn't recorded then, but it's been, as Larry can probably well attest, it's been a long year and few months to get it in our name.
And it, you're referring to the tiger trail behind the school?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a first and a second discussion?
Definitely being properly recorded at the, Frank?
Yes.
Are there sewer taps approved for this?
There is 20 taps approved for it. They were requesting, I see there's 23 lots on here, but they only have 20 taps approved right now.
Six on there, if I recall right.
Thirty. Thirty.
It's 30.
Yeah, it's 30 on there. So, there are 10 shy of sewer taps at this point, and they were willing to go forward and take the chance on getting future capacity.
Would you say that again? Are we still looking at the potential of leaving ourselves open if we did ever want to finish the road? Because it doesn't reflect that. Did I miss something?
Well, the phase line, it stopped short of that cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Lot 21, so if they only have 20 taps, they do the first 20.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't bury it from it.
If we could get somebody to fix that road, we'd be tickled to death.
Well, it looks like it's our problem now.
And one thing I might add to, is Will has done a review of the road itself, and he's passed judgment that we've probably got a 10-year or better road lifetime still.
But we're going to have to do some patching and stuff on it?
Yes, sir. We take care of the patching. The developer's taking care of the striping. And I think we've got to put up some metal signs for crosswalks and that type of thing.
Any other discussion?
And I'll condition that statement of lifespan on the road, that it is strictly based on visual observations. There was no coring done, there was no investigative digging or anything like that. That wasn't part of our, my directive, but based on what you see out there, it's held up pretty well considering the school bus traffic and all the school traffic.
You know, one of the concerns that I think of with that road, and knowing how they do the car rider line, there would be parts of the day that it would be total, the road would be totally blocked off. Have you talked to the school, meaning the access to the subdivision? Yeah, I guess you're going to have to work with the schools and figure it out.
That, and also, we're furnishing a crossing guard out there that will help control that, and that will be under the police department's budget. That was part of the interlocal agreement.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.3, discuss and/or take action on infrastructure construction plans for Cumberland Estates, formerly Greenland Estates, Phase 1. Portion of MAP 47 parcel 66.04, 52.56 acres, zoned R 20 PUD, Kenneth B. Green owner. Is there anyone here to represent?
There's three, four comments from city staff pertaining to this item. Number one, per the zoning ordinance, within 60 days of the BOC adopting a PUD rezoning, owner shall record with the Register of Deeds a boundary plat or suitably comparable document identifying that the affected properties are subject to the provisions of a PUD overlay district. Any off-site improvements and special conditions to which the development is subject shall be recorded with or on such plat. This document should be submitted to city staff for review and comment prior to being recorded. Number two, please provide a copy of the deed that conveys the property to the proposed developer. Per the zoning ordinance, no action is to take place on any final development documents, including construction plans, until the land has been conveyed to the developer. Number three, in accordance with the recommendation found in the traffic impact study conducted by Fishbach Transportation Group in December 2015, a note should be added to the Cumberland Drive typical section detail on Sheet 7 that clearly states Cumberland Drive will be widened to a total paved width of 20 feet, and a new 6x30 concrete curb and gutter section will be added on the south side of Cumberland Drive for the full length of this phase that fronts Cumberland Drive. Number four, a standard note for requiring fencing around stormwater ponds 1 and 2 is shown on the plans. The fencing note is omitted for stormwater pond 3. For clarity purposes, Pond 3 is also required to be fenced. And that's all.
Thank you.
Excuse me. He's looking it up for me. Do we need to go ahead with motion?
Move to approve discussion.
Second.
The first and a second discussion?
Can you step up for just a sec? Couple of questions. And Tim's looking it up for me, that what we've got appears kind of small for me to read. The lots facing the road, are they all now one acre lots?
I believe so, yes, sir. I gotta double check that. I got.
Yeah, that was one of the requirements, I believe, that when we passed that, it would be one acre lots, and supposed to have a buffer zone?
One acre lots, the 1 and 2, can't read my numbers, but the 2 in the middle, I believe, are, there's four that are acre, the 2 that, the 2 that are on each side of the entrances will face the other way, and I believe they're less than an acre.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, it looks like 48, 195, and 196 are all shy of an acre.
Yeah. Yeah, our request was that any lot that's on Cumberland Drive be one acre, and have a, forget the width or the length of the buffer area between Cumberland and those homes, but does anybody have that information?
I can add some insight into that. I don't have that specific information. Those items were brought to the attention of the BOC by way of written comments that were still outstanding when they considered the second and final reading for the PUD rezoning, which as you know includes the preliminary master development plan. The BOC approved the preliminary master development plan as presented to them without any notations of my comments to them. So, while the planning commission did pass along a recommendation for approval based on those changes, the Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning application and the PUD and the preliminary master development plan without discussion or mention of those comments.
Okay. Well, the PUD is just, I mean, being preliminary, it's just a zoning of it. It's not necessarily how the subdivision is laid out, is that correct?
Not for PUDs.
And the plat becomes part of the zoning.
When you have a PUD rezoning, and the preliminary master development plan is before you, it is a part of that rezoning. And when you rezone something with a PUD designation, that preliminary master development plan is what's approved. And that is the zoning. That's why we have attempted to go through very stringent comments and discussion on the layouts that are shown in those preliminary master development plans for PUDs.
If I'm recalling correctly, this is not the plat that we seen last time. I don't think lots 1, 2, 49, and 50 were this big on the.
Has adjusted some. So what was voted, was this one voted on, or was the original that we saw?
This is the one that was presented to the BOC. And then, I had, I had been asked to review that and provide any remaining comments based on this revision, because, Mr. Mangrum, you're correct. They did revise 1, 2, 49, and 50 to be one acre lots. My understanding is the applicant's interpretation of one acre lots fronting Cumberland Drive, this is their interpretation, was any lot that actually accessed Cumberland Drive. The lots that accessed the interior streets, they did not view as fronting Cumberland Drive, and therefore, that's why those revisions weren't made, to make those one acre, at least one acre. And there was never, there was never a revised document submitted showing any type of buffer or landscaping plan.
It's concerning to me that we would approve something, and something different would be shown or presented at the BOC. I don't understand that.
And so, can the BOC vote on something that we haven't gave our approval on?
Yes. They, the submittal that was given to the BOC was the applicant's attempt to revise the plan based on the feedback and the motions that were a part of the planning commission. There were not any, there were not any changes to the preliminary master development plan that did not pertain in some form or fashion to the comments, or the requests, or the desires of the planning commission's motion. So in that regard, there's nothing changed outside the scope of what you had discussed and what you would like to have seen. But as, as indicated by the plan before you tonight, there were comments that were remaining that were not addressed by the BOC.
Although I appreciate their attempt to change some of this, and get those lots bigger that front on Cumberland, and not to shoot a hole in their theory that any lot that fronted on a new existing street, they viewed different. Lot 2 is on that street, but it's still like a lot.
Mr. Hall, do you have any explanation that you can give us on how was this explained to the Board of Commissioners? And how far in advance was Will's comments given to us?
As far as the, how far in advance, I do not know as far as that goes. The explanation I had that it faced the interior streets and not one, not Cumberland.
Well, what else is lacking from the original?
Like your engineer comments had the 15,000 perimeter lots. Looks like some of those perimeters have been increased.
If you'll give me a minute, I can find it.
It looks like all the perimeters that touches other property and not green space has been I mean, I honestly like the plan, except for them three lots that front on Cumberland not being a little larger.
Yeah, that was such a big point of discussion. We even talked about possibly having a buffer just on the front entry. And now we still have the small lots on that front road. We were trying to.
With no buffer.
Yeah, we were trying, yeah, with no buffer shown. We were trying to duplicate what's across the street to try and get that feel of those one acre lots, and now we'll have sides of houses on the smaller lots still facing that Cumberland.
That was one of the biggest concerns that we discussed.
And then, you know, I still have issues with the impact on the whole road. You know, the traffic study's only for as it exits, but it's going to have a huge impact on the school and coming down to Cumberland Drive.
Actually lost about, what, seven or eight lots from the plat we seen last year? Wasn't it 252 or something on the one we seen?
251.
Down to 245.
I believe those are the only, the lot sizes on Cumberland, and the buffered landscaping plan were the only two that were still remaining.
That would include your engineer comments from the last reveal? I think there was 11.
I'm sorry, say it again.
That would include your comments from, the engineer comments from the last approval? Like, I think 10 items? So, you're looking at, is that, in that what you're looking at?
Yeah, I believe we're looking at the same thing.
Like 15,000 perimeter, then 2 was the 5 and 1/2 foot green strip on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Then notation of the green space, 10% underground electric, all that stuff?
Yep.
I guess my question would be, was our comments relayed to the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, I would have to, I mean, there was discussion about the lots. I don't know if it was brought, I would have to pull the minutes and see, because it was a while back. And I think, I don't recall 100%, but I'm thinking that the comments may have just was here that night. I'm not sure if I necessarily got it more than a few hours ahead of time, and if you don't check your email, you know, if it wasn't caught, you know? But I don't know. I'd have to pull the minutes and see. Do you remember, Vice Mayor?
You'd almost think something like that happened. This is a pretty big deviation from what we talked about.
Yeah, the buffers, that conversation was pretty long. We could talk about it during our comments, but I guess I'll just say it since I brought it up. But how could we, I guess what we would need to do is not, if there's multiple, if the approval's based on kind of a contingency, then we just don't approve it until we get to see it again, is, I guess, the only way to protect this from happening.
Well, and I kind of think the whole PUD deal, having a different standard on whether that's approved. Normally, we're just approving zoning, and then it still comes back to you, so it's gotten, you know, maybe that needs to be explained a little bit more to the board, because we're so used to, we're just approving the zoning, and so maybe the board might need a better way.
I might have a. I might have a way to solve this is when we have a PUD zoning coming before the BOC. I think it'd be nice to go ahead and require Will to be here.
I was going to say that, too.
That's a good idea.
Or a planning commission member that, you know, somebody wants a staff review.
Yeah.
I'd be, I'd be more than happy to attend any BOC meetings that, if requested, where there's PUD rezoning considerations.
I have a question. The, one of the topics of discussion also was this little feeder road that dumps into Cumberland right by the curb. Was that part of the traffic study? I'm assuming it was.
It was not. And my comments to the applicant when they submitted initially for this phase was that when the phase, when the construction plans for the phase that includes that feeder road near the curb is submitted, that my recommendation is going to be a dedicated traffic impact study from a site distance standpoint on where that road is being proposed. And that's always been, that's been a common comment for all the submittals pertaining to this application from day one. So, at the time when those construction plans come in, that's something that certainly needs to be addressed. And my suspicion is that the alignment of that road may need to be shifted to the west away from that curb. But that's not a part of this particular phase. It'll be constructed at a later date.
Well, and I actually have a problem because, you know, 99% of the time, it is stated in our motion, I'd like to see the minutes, and maybe we shouldn't move forward until we research this. But I would like to see, most of the times, it will say based on Will's recommendations included. But I don't know with it being a rezoning, you know, if that wasn't said and where that would leave us, you know?
On the PUD rezonings, the BOC has final and ultimate say. So, with all due respect...
Yeah, I understand, but if we said it, thinking that, I'd just like to review the minutes. I mean, obviously, from the PUD, if we could undo recommendations, then, you know, that's something we need to be aware of. I just, not remembering exactly how it was presented and having to have a conversation about it is kind of hard.
The, one of the staff review comments was about fencing around stormwater ponds. Is that a, is that a city rule with residential?
Yes.
I'm aware of it on commercial, but, okay.
All commercial industrial detention is, should be underground.
Sure.
And then, residential detention is allowed to be underground or above ground, but any above ground is required to have fencing around it. And I think it's their intention to fence stormwater pond three. It was just a note that was omitted.
Okay. The fencing, it looks like they're planning to use a chain leak fence.
Correct.
I'd like to see something other than a chain leak fence.
That's another thing we talked about at the last meeting, too, on the notes, read We talked about some kind of landscaping to make that, that front look more aesthetic.
Yeah. Yeah, since there's a stormwater pond right on Cumberland Drive, and now, since we don't have any buffers or anything, definitely don't, personally, I don't like chain leak fences. The, any comments?
I agree. I mean, it's right on Cumberland. That's going to be a new dinosaur.
Yeah.
I think it should be landscaped, and I believe we, we discussed that whole issue about, since that pond was fronting Cumberland, that it would, it would be landscaped and it would look more like a, you know, without a chain leak.
Was the full plan presented to the board like this? I just don't recall that it was. Do you have what was presented to the BOC? I'm trying to pull up my minutes.
Larry, do you remember how it was presented? I don't have it right now.
Sheet two, I believe, is most likely what was presented.
Yeah, I would think you guys didn't hit the construction grounds since it was rezoning based.
Do you know what date it came to the, the board?
I don't know. I can go and see if I can pull up the file.
I make a motion, we defer this until we can get to the bottom of what exactly was approved and not approved.
January, January 7th was the BOC meeting that it was presented.
Yeah, I also, I don't see any, like a landscape plan. I would assume that something with this common areas and that would have a landscape detail. I second, I'm deferring this item.
I just feel like it's best until we know exactly where, and unfortunately, I'm not a whole lot of help tonight because I don't remember the details from January 7th. So, and if we, it just depends on me. I mean, if it's, some of this stuff was not presented correctly and we voted, then, you know, maybe we need to relook at, you know, whether or not, I mean, I don't know what our options are, but we need to at least be able to get to the bottom of it.
It's my opinion that what's presented before you tonight doesn't deviate from what the BOC voted on in any manner.
And the BOC received your comments as to what this plan was being?
An email was sent to city staff with my comments. I was not in attendance. I did not distribute those comments. I cannot speak to whether or not the BOC had those comments in their hands or not.
In most cases before the BOC approves anything, we will ask, has it made approval of the planning commission? And if anything was placed on contingency, moving forward, has it been done? Now, I'm like the mayor, I don't recall word for word. It's been a while. We've had a lot of meetings since then, so I would like to also just take a look at it and see if it was. And if that's what we voted on with the standard for what we had as far as contingency upon having something approved, and if it was said, yes, it is, then there's a different story, but I'm ready to move forward.
Well, you know, the only thing I can think of is just because it's rezoning, if it wasn't, but almost in every meeting, it says, pending on Will's suggestions, but, you know, I would just have to see the minutes before I could feel good about it.
Okay.
I mean, it may not matter, but I'd like to see.
Okay, we have a first and a second to defer. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? 8.4, discuss and/or take action on concept plan for Horn Tavern Road, map 22, parcel 15.00, 21.40 acres, zoned RS 40, Raymond and Brownie Lee Pruitt, owners.
Accuse myself in voting on this, please.
Thank you.
There are two items, city staff review. Number one, general note, all proposed streets must meet the city's design standards for public streets and will be reviewed for compliance at the time construction plans are submitted for review. Number two, general note, all proposed drainage improvements must meet the city's standards for drainage and stormwater infrastructure and will be reviewed for compliance at the time construction plans are submitted for review.
Move to approve for discussion.
Second.
The first and the second, discussion?
I know there was some conversation with the, initially, about the sidewalks and stuff like that. I just wanted to see, readdress that. Hang on, let me open this up.
There's a note on the conceptual plan that says, developer is asking for variance on sidewalks, curb and gutter, and open space requirements.
Mr. Mangram?
Yes.
Would you mind going to the podium for this since this is your project and we can ask questions?
He can answer every one of them. I mean, I'd be glad to, but I don't even plan, I wouldn't even plan on top of it. I was going to say, Mr. Martin, take care.
Well, Mr. Martin can.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, number one on the sidewalks, is there, it's hard to tell, is there any on one side of the street or just all together?
We're requesting a full variance.
Full variance on it, okay.
And if it was granted, does that mean it would be granted here?
Yes.
It would stop here, okay.
And the curb and gutter?
Yes, right.
Is that, will there be any curb, extruded curb, or just?
We'd prefer not. I mean, the, we had a pretty good discussion, I thought, in the staff session or the review session. We talked, you know, about the difference between this and kind of an urban setting. And when you have county lots, you have such a long road frontage, it allows you to not put curbs in and let water go to the ditch. And from federal EPA all the way down to the lowest levels, the initiative push is to get water into areas where it can infiltrate. So, it reduces the potential for offsite, you know, stormwater effects, which I actually came out, that point came out in our staff, the review session. And, and, I mean, we can do calculations that would show beyond shadow of a doubt that there would be much less water to manage, and it would be easier managed than collecting it as you would typically in an urban setting in gutters. First of all, fining it, you know, with the curb and then putting it in a pipe and concentrating it, you know, to a stormwater pond, if that makes sense.
Sure. What about ribbon curb?
Pardon?
A ribbon curb, just for protection of the street and the asphalt at the edge?
That was my question as well. How to transition from the...
You can do that, and you can have little curb cuts along the way to let water exit.
No, no, I'm talking at just a ribbon curb where it's the same height as the asphalt, it's just in order to contain and protect that.
Like transition from the, the front of the yard to the...
Right. And aesthetically, that looks better, too, yeah. I don't know what the cost of that is. Surely, it's...
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm just throwing out...
Are you familiar with that kind of thing? I mean, it would obviously be, I don't want this all to boil down to cost. I mean, there is a cost element, but truly, from the city's standpoint, you know, it's just, it just makes life a lot easier when you get water...
Sure.
...into grassy areas and let it infiltrate. Does that make sense?
Didn't we initially put a variance on this from having sidewalks on both sides to having sidewalks on one side with curb and gutter?
That's not what we were talking about.
That was a discussion, but we didn't decide one or the other.
Will, do you see any, from, from your experience, do you see any issues with, with not having any curb or concrete to, on the edges, like I'm saying, it doesn't? Okay.
Apart from aesthetically, and apart from it being a variance from what your requirements are, from a functional drainage standpoint, there's literally millions and millions of miles in middle Tennessee of rural road that, well, heck, there's a lot in Fairview that, you know, just has a one or two foot gravel shoulder. And then, you transition from asphalt to the gravel shoulder into the grass ditch.
Sure.
And let me just, for clarity purposes, and no discussion did take place in the staff review on the requested, the anticipated requested variances. In no way, shape, form, or fashion did staff encourage or promote or approve any variances that were being thought of or potentially requested. That's completely your decision, and we just made the applicant aware that if they desired to seek a variance, that it need to be clearly noted on the plans what variance it is that they were seeking. And they've done that.
These, these septics, these would be through Williamson...
Pardon me?
These septics would be approved through Williamson County? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't tell you.
The septic tanks would be...
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And are they, I guess for this area, are they requesting the low, low pressure pump systems?
Yes, right, right.
I just still, I'm kind of hung up on the fact of, I know we had some in-depth conversation about, you know, just trying to allow people to build with the Dixon Water situation. But if we're taking on a street, and that's basically what we're doing, even though you're getting septic because it's county, and we're being asked to take on this, the street, and it's butts around our city, you know, I don't know if we should deviate from what we're requiring. I think there's other places on Horn Tavern that we've stuck to the gun and made them do exactly, and I think it'll be a bad practice to do this.
That is a good example, right, nearly right across the street, that Horn Tavern, they have the sidewalks coming right across.
And on the last one that we approved, didn't we eliminate sidewalks? Toddies?
Oh, he's got sidewalks installed in the front?
He has, he has sidewalks in place.
The thing, the one thing with sidewalks is, you know, in this application, and I think there's kind of two things I look at it. Is it a sidewalk for the, for the people that live here or the sidewalk to front the street? There's only one home I see that's on Horn Tavern. Any other sidewalk would be interior to the subdivision where, you know, they're estate lots, they're spread out, there's land. I mean, for me, that's, that's kind of a different take on it. Where I do think Fairview should really look at, you know, where are these sidewalks going to lead? If they're on Horn Tavern, if they're on Cumberland Drive, you know, and one day leading to a place where, where the community could gather. But, you know, like I said, for this instance, it's mainly internal use. I think the variance, you know, I think that's a very reasonable way to look at that variance in this application. Where, when you have a denser neighborhood, where homes are 65... where homes are 65-foot, 55-foot wide, obviously, an internal sidewalk and, and street, you know, that's what you're trying to do, is build a front porch community where the neighbors could, could gather and talk, where this is, again, kind of just more spread out, so my, my two cents on it.
Don't we have a fee provision in lieu of sidewalks?
We...
I think we do.
We do, I believe.
Perhaps that's something we should consider on this.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm just philosophically, are you afraid of showing that there is some consideration to large lot subdivisions, because, just like you said initially, there's a situation here with Dixon Water Authority, I mean, so that's going to go on for quite a long time, and, and even if it didn't, the way things are set up in a lot of jurisdictions, I mean, it's just cost prohibitive to do large lots, and so you would set yourself up to have a community that did, that was, that could have larger lots because it's cost effective to do that, so otherwise, you're stuck with looking at, like Franklin, where it's a sea of houses, and you'll never have anything more than maybe eight or 10,000 square feet, so I'm just curious.
Well, now, it's all, to me, it's more all about whether, the way in which I applaud, I think it's creative to go the county route and do the septic tanks, especially in the times that we have had to deal with, and it's been harder for small developers to build in Fairview, so, I mean, but if we didn't take the road in, it wouldn't matter to me, but because you're wanting us to take care of the road, then all of a sudden, to me, the standards matter, that's what it is, it's nothing about, I mean, I think it would be a nice addition to the community to have the large lots, I mean, different than from the cookie cutter, you know, subdivisions that we've been coming up with.
But, and the road would be built to standards, it's, there's components, I mean, the sidewalk is like a totally different component, the stormwater, having stormwater exit the street quickly probably is better than, maybe better, I mean, than having it funneled below the road where if there's leaks, it could cause, you know, the subsurface to erode and you'd have potholes, and so you get the water off the street, then it's actually better, so, I mean, we would build, the, so the street would be built to, you know, standard spec, subgrade, pavement width and everything, question is, can we, you know, eliminate the sidewalks and the cost of the, of the stormwater, and I could sit down with Will, and I know we don't probably want to get into a lot of detail here, but this road is real short, and you're probably only going to have like maybe one, at the most, two sets of storm drains, there's some, there's kind of some circumstantial, you know, facts or situations here that, that we could probably do something that looks just like city standards, because we don't have a pipe from here to here, this will be your first inlet, but honestly, you have to get this water out and get it to a stormwater pond over here, if we had extruded curves, get a curve that the water would go over into the stormwater pond, so then you would eliminate this set of inlets, the next set of inlets is at this pond, so water just sheet flows along the road and goes to this pond, so, I mean, I could, maybe I should have had this conversation with Will, I didn't take, I didn't take the work session to mean that we were going to get these variances, like, I didn't mean that at all, but, but having the comments, I mean, it's easy to sit down and look at this technically, technically, and actually show that we can do almost the same as what the city requires, in fact, we may not even have to do the pipe, but we could have avoided this conversation possibly, so I don't know, Will and I could sit down and look at it, and it would all, I think it would meet the intent of what you're trying to do with, with city standards.
Yep, I was going to ask that with the, without the curb, if you could look at doing a bioretention or something where you wouldn't have to have any inlet structures or pipe, or stormwater pipe, you know?
Yeah, well, we're going to have to have two small ponds, I can't sit here and tell you how much will infiltrate, but it's certainly going to be a lot better to have it travel overland, grassy, doing a grassy swale than, than a concrete pipe, so.
Mr. Row, do you have something to add?
During, during the staff meeting, I believe that you were asking for relief from the, from the streetlights, is that still?
Yes.
Because it's not on the...
Yeah.
That was just a comment, so.
What was that again?
During the staff meeting, they were also asking for relief of installing streetlights. Just as a comment, in lieu of that, I've seen it done in a type of subdivision like this, that with the one acre parcels where either in the homeowners association or, or deed restrictions, where they, each, each homeowner would have to put in a, a postlight like 35 feet from the roadway, and that way, the city doesn't have to take care of it, you still have the street lit up, so that's just a, a comment.
Yeah, that could look nice, too.
Well, and I'm just going to go back, and I don't mean to beat up on the street, because I think those are some good suggestions, and, you know, understand what you're wanting to do, but I just don't understand what benefits the city for taking on this street, so, I mean, we have a lot of sections, let's say Northwest Highway, for example, they're county, but we're stuck taking care of the roads, and then if you ever mention zoning, rezoning, they would say, we don't need your services, but the road, they drive in, so I just, you know, I don't understand, you know, why this would benefit and why we'd want one more road to have to maintain.
Well, part of what we're doing is, is not putting something in that you have to maintain, like sidewalks and storm sewers.
And, and this is 13 taxpayers that don't have a choice to say, I don't want to be in your city, whereas with the islands, like you're referencing, you know, you're exactly right, I, I, we were, I was up here multiple times when we brought islands, and you had people fighting not to be in the city, even though they took, the road they took home was, they couldn't get to their home without being in the city, so, I see what you're saying, but, but in this application, I mean, you're getting, you know, 13 building permits, 13, you know, taxpayers in perpetuity of the city, and if, if everything, you know, the sidewalks, I think, are something we need to discuss, because to me, that, like, in small interior subdivision like this, requiring sidewalks in here, or doing a sidewalk fee where we could collect that money and put it into our city's center area, or the historical village, or into an area that actually, it, like, multiple, more than 13 families will use, you know, I think those are things where let's allocate, and it's somewhat in, in line with the parkland dedication that we saw, where, you know, it's almost like we should look at that with sidewalk dedication, where let's, let's locate these hot zones of where we feel traffic will go, and say, okay, this is Horn Tavern, how many people are going to be walking down that road, you know, versus how many people are going to be walking down Fairview Boulevard, or going to Bowie Park, or something like that, so that's kind of off basis, but it's relative, so, but that's why the sidewalks are an important discussion, because we've been here before.
Well, when you say sidewalk, the, how, is that based on the width of a normal city lot, or this acre lot?
I'm sorry, the sidewalk?
Like the fee, is it, how is it?
Ah, we, we talked, we spoke on that, no, I don't believe anybody has opted into it, but I think it's just based on lineal footage.
So our lineal footage would be disproportionate to what a normal city lot would be?
That's true.
Because we have 150 feet, and normally you would have 60 feet.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
Can I, can I offer just kind of a, I don't want to beat it to death, but it's, it's an important issue, on the stormwater thing, and maybe I can kind of engage Will here, you know, Will, like, typically, a normal spacing for, say, grates or, say, maybe 300 feet, I mean, it might, let's just pick a number, it's somewhere kind of in that range, if, if we sheet flow something, sheet flow water to a point where it would be normally caught in a grate, but it needs to go to a detention pond, can we just do, like, we do extruded curb, and just put a curb cut there and let the water go to the detention pond, instead of having to put a grate there and then a headlong on the other side, and you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, it's like, right, you see right here?
We can accomplish, from an engineering standpoint, we can accomplish what needs to be done with the drainage, with curves, without curves, with ribbon curves, with, with whatever, it, it's truly, in my opinion, a matter of aesthetics and standards for your subdivisions, and a few things I might add, to the best of my knowledge and the research that I've conducted, and I may have missed it, the reason city street, a variance from city streets isn't on there is because there's no requirement found in any of your documents that mandate city street, uh, streetlights be put in, so that's why that's not listed as a variance. There are several communities that are of similar size and demographics of Fairview that have experienced a desire from not only developers, but from citizens to encourage larger lot developments, and one way that they do that, White House is an example, for parcels that are larger, for subdivisions that have parcels larger than an acre, and at least 150 feet of width on the proposed street, they don't require sidewalks, and they don't require curb and gutter. Williamson County is like that, Williamson County standard is sidewalks are only required for residential developments that have lots that are 10,000 square feet or less, or developments that are in certain special overlay districts, so it, it's not completely uncommon to reduce some of the aesthetic infrastructure requirements in an effort to promote larger lot, less dense developments. From a cost to the city standpoint, I can undoubtedly say that the cost to maintain a road that does not have curb and gutter and storm drainage, culverts and catch basins and curb inlets or sidewalks, the cost to the city is, long-term, maintenance and operation cost is much less for a road that does not have those components. It's pretty simple formula, you know, if you have a sidewalk that buckles, which I think everyone's familiar with, some of the T-dot sidewalks that you're having issues with, then, you know, it'd be the city's responsibility to go in and, and fix those, same with storm drainage, so, you know, you're talking about some of the benefits to the city in accepting a road, or allowing a variance for roads like this, the math, the, the economics would be that it would be a lesser cost long-term to the city to maintain a street like this, again, with the caveat that the street itself is, is built to your standard, as far as the, the subbase compaction, the stone that's underneath the asphalt, and the two asphalt layers, the binder layer and the surface course, there's no variance as being sought for any of that part of the road. And, and what Mr. Martin's saying, as far as the drainage, is accurate, you know, when, if you've got oil or gasoline or any, any other trash or debris that's on a street that has curb and gutter and curb inlets, and a first flush rain, you know, that, that heavy, you know, one inch in 30 minutes comes, all that stuff's getting flushed right into those pipes and right down to wherever it discharges to, when you've got roadside ditches and swells that are grassed and channeled, there is some level of biology that takes place in filtering some of that out before it ever gets to a tributary or, or stream in that manner, so, you know, I, I see the merits of, of potentially allowing, and, and I would encourage you that if, if you deem this to be a variance that, that you would like to entertain, then I would strongly suggest to you that you will be setting a precedent, and to set parameters on that precedent of a minimum, maybe, you know, to look at revising your subregs to allow for this type of variance to take place for subdivisions that have lots greater than an acre, greater than acre, you set the size, whatever you want, and then the same thing for the lot width, because designers and developers can get pretty creative and have a 50-foot wide lot that's 300 feet long, or whatever, and we want, that's not what the intention is, so that's why the width threat part is also a part of the actual area of the lot.
Now, I, I think this is a, a real overall creative way to, to think outside the box with the, the limitations that we're facing with the onsite sewer, there's, I'm, I'm facing it firsthand with the topography, the, you know, just the way Fairview is with rolling hills, trees, you know, the onsite sewer is, is not easy for, for what's, what's out here, but the other thing is the large lots where, you know, that's kind of something I've heard a lot, is people don't want density, but then, you know, here, here's the opposite side of it, and in the end, you know, a developer only moves forward if the pro forma looks right, and it's a juggling act of, of costs, so this might be a good jumping off point for, like Will mentioned, for us to look at our subdivision regulations and maybe give this as an option, and let the developer figure it out if it's, if he could make it work or not, the, cost-wise, so.
Well, and I kind of had a set mindset, but thanks to Will's conversation, explanation, I feel better about allowing this, I mean, I do think it would be nice to provide acre lots in Fairview, and we get a lot of complaints about the, you know, houses being so close together that, you know, this might be something we want to consider.
It's a given take, you know, with density, you should be able to get amenities with that mass of people, you could get pools and that, but that's not for everybody, so for those people who want a, an estate lot and, and, you know, have some, some space, I think it's a nice option.
I agree with what Will had to say, I think it just shows that if, you know, we have lots of this size and subdivisions that come in that, you know, give people an opportunity to be on those larger lots, since it doesn't have the impact on the city as far as the cost, I'm in favor of the variances to allow for subdivisions like this to be encouraged.
But I would recommend, I, the ideal about the streetlight that you recommended might be something you want to consider, even though we don't have anything, even though it's 12 lots, it might be something that you'll definitely want to consider.
I live in a subdivision without streetlights, and I prefer it. I love, I love looking up at the stars and not having all that light, I have lights on my house, if I want it lit, I turn the lights on in my house, so, I mean, it's just a different way of looking at things. Right, Brandon?
She turns her lights on.
Hey! He lives next door to me.
She turned them on.
And, Mr. Martin, I like your conversations with utilizing the, the natural watershed, I think that's smart, and I, I like when, you know, creativity kind of takes hold and kind of seeing what, what could, what we could do with that kind of thought process, so.
Well, you have an experienced developer here, so don't give all the credit to me.
So you're going to get back... So, you're going to get back with Will and determine, um, you were asking him about, I think he was talking to the city attorney time, but you were asking him about different options of, um, drainage or?
Yeah, the, the good news on this, it's, it's a, it's thirteen lots, it's about eight hundred feet of, nine hundred feet of road. And the drainage is going to be very simple. Are you saying that maybe we should, uh, I mean, I don't think there's any problem with going ahead with tonight and then to prove it like it is, just my personal, from where I stand. And then Will and I can work out how we actually do the drainage. But, I mean, Tim says he wouldn't mind putting, um, extruded curb in. It's not cheap, but it'll look very similar to what some of your other streets look like. Um, we can still do curb cuts and let water go where it needs to go to allow it to infiltrate and bioremediate, so to speak, or whatever. But I don't, I, I'd be more than glad to work through it with Will. I think he'll obviously look at my construction plans and give me his thoughts at that time, so.
The, the, the one thing to think about whenever you lay pipe and stormwater is it, it's, it's not what it does after it's in, but it's also the, the installation of it, so.
Oh, it's.
You, you have a lot of excavation, soil disturbance, tree removal.
I mean, you have to backfill it with gravel to make sure you don't get compaction. And when you don't, I mean, if you don't watch it close and you have potholes and then you get people complaining and it's just, you know what that is, it's never-ending.
I'm, uh, yeah, I, I'm, um, little background, I'm doing a development in Franklin that's several hundred feet from the Harpeth. And that was something that I've learned a lot about with, we have a ribbon curb where we do a natural watershed into a bioretention and then it just goes to the Harpeth. So, uh, Franklin, you know, is very particular. And I figured if, if they're okay with it, they've done their homework. But, uh, learning from my engineer on that project, it was, uh, very interesting, so. But there's, there's always that where, you know, disturbance, removal, those type things. And then while you're doing it, if it rains, you have silt pollution, you know? So, there, there's a lot to think about, so whenever those things could be circumvented for the better.
Right. So, if it goes through as we've requested, I mean, we'll look at the ribbon curb, um, the different things that are available.
Sure.
I think Will's got something to say.
Pardon?
I think Will's got something to say.
Sure.
Uh, I, I would suggest not allowing, um, extruded curb. My suggestion would either be, don't require curb at all or require the curb and gutter. Extruded curb is just a pain, it busts all the time and it'll be a constant maintenance nightmare for, for the city. So, appreciate the offer, but that would be my suggestion. Either require the curb and gutter or don't require, but probably not anything.
What's your thought on the ribbon curb?
Uh, I don't have any personal experience with ribbon curbs.
Yeah, in my application, it's, it's just for, it's, it's just that having that concrete outline. All it, I mean, it's literally for my application, the water just runs over it into, into the watershed. So, it's, it's just, you know, aesthetic, I suppose, at least how the city of Franklin views it, but.
And I would expect that it would, like Will says, you know, if it's even less of a mass than a extruded curb, it's kind of, it has no reinforcement, it's just going to break up eventually.
Yeah, it, yeah, the way it's poured, it's on, it's kind of like a, um, a, a four-inch rollover curb, but it, but it's just flat. That's what I mean, it's, it's, it's like two, it's the same, it's the same width of your, as your asphalt. So, again, it, it has no purpose of controlling water or anything, it's just with, it's like an outline of your asphalt.
It's just like a transition between, between tile and carpet.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it, you know, it, I'm just saying that, I don't think it's necessary for this.
You would have never done it unless it had been, hadn't been required.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. That's why, that's why, you know.
That's the bottom line, yeah. I'm agree with Will, I just, I, I, the faster the water comes off the road and gets into a ditch, the quicker it infiltrates. You know, you're going to see a lot more of this when things come back and you start doing small lots again and, and, um, you know, you're, you have to comply with MS four and, and all those requirements and Will knows all about that, you're going to be seeing all these bioretention ponds, you know, all this.
Mr. Hall?
I'd just like to remind y'all that we are already having several issues with extruded curbs within certain subdivisions already, busting and breaking up.
Yeah, we, extruded curbs are in our rearview mirror, we don't want, we, that's why we switched to six-thirty to have a solid concrete structure that won't crack. So, yeah, we're not, I'm not, I'm definitely not saying anything about extruded curb.
Okay, so, is there any other discussion? We do have a first and a second for approval.
Do we need to amend the motion or are we clear, Will, there's nothing else?
We'll be approving the variance.
For approval with the variances?
And this is a conceptual, so.
This is a conceptual plan, so. And it's not a PUD, so.
Exactly.
It's a conceptual plan, it's not a PUD, so we will have another look, so, anyway.
Was there a motion?
There was a first and a second.
I don't remember a discussion.
A second, he, he firsted, I seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight point five, discuss master plan on Meadows of Fairview, Chris Vance.
How you doing?
Hello?
Ready for me to begin?
Yes.
I'm president of HOA, I represent fifty-eight taxpayers that live there, uh, for the Meadows of Fairview. Been there since the original phase one of the development, uh, since it's been started back in nineteen ninety-eight. Three phases are currently complete out of a six-phase, uh, development. The problem that we're running into is we've got through phase three and construction stopped, so on and so forth. There are surveyors out there, they were surveying, uh, the current owner of the property, John Coleman Hayes, is attempting to sell the property to a Mr. Huff out of Alabama to put affordable housing apartments up. He instructed us that he's had several conversations with the city and such, because we met with him yesterday. Uh, he had some preliminary plat drawings drawn up for that development. When we asked him what he's going to do about the water system, he said he's going to put a drip system in. Our, our problem is this, I, I'm trying to defend our community, so I attempted to get all plats in minutes since the development originated, which I have done, with the exception of the master plan. Our places are PUDs, there was a PUD overlay. The problem is, there's no master plan. The city doesn't have it, the developer doesn't have it, the deeds office doesn't have it. On a PUD overlay, the most basic document of all is your master plan. The reason I know this, we now have a, a law form to represent us in trying to obtain the master plan. And, and our other problem is, we want to know the city's stance and we're trying to get a meeting with the commissioners, I've emailed them, I haven't had a response. You know, you've got fifty-eight people here that want some answers. There's also going to be concern from the homeowners behind the property on Cox Pike there. And, and our problem is this, we've run into some roadblocks and getting things we need and so on and so forth as far as, um, the master plan. My thing is, how can you build this six-phase development and all you have is a sketch plan and a concept plan? Where is the master plan? There's a lot of things in these minutes where he posted bond with the city that were supposed to be completed, such as amenities, such as playground, different things, never got completed. His bond got released, none of the work was ever done. There's also supposed to have been another fifty-foot easement built that goes to the Peak property. Planner's Road is our road, it's private property. We have the deeds to that road, we own that road. Back behind that property is the remaining acreage that he's yet to build on or the property that he has a, uh, a buyer for currently. My thing is this, uh, well, we allow Ms. Peak to use our, our private road because we figure one house, we're not going to cause a stir over that. But I did inform him, he's not landlocked. If he wants access to his land, he needs to build out his fifty-foot regress and egress that's clearly stated on the two thousand and five revision plat, concept plan that was filed here with the city. That fifty-foot egress and regress was never built, although the minutes reflect it was supposed to have been built. So, we're going through all the minutes and finding all the blunders that were made along the way in an attempt to defend our property. You have fifty-eight homeowners now, all of a sudden, he wants to go and cram, uh, all this affordable housing. We bought into this six-phase development that the city approved. Now, all of a sudden, you know, according to him, he's met with the city, he's done some things. In his words, he's, he's done things for the city of Fairview, this and that. Look, like I explained to him, we found nothing on record with the planning commissioner, anybody else, since two thousand and five. So, my question to him was, how did all these discussions go on behind closed doors? You know, because as far as I'm concerned, a lot of this business needs to be conducted in a formal setting, not behind closed doors. But we're, we're wanting to sort of see what the city's stance is going to be. Are they going to force him to build out as the, uh, concept plan and the sketch plans show, even though we don't have a master plan? Or are they going to allow him to deviate and pretty much do what he wants with that land? We all invested in this place, you know, and we bought under this plan. And now, all of a sudden, this plan sixteen years later, because it originally started back in ninety-eight or so, is being ripped out from underneath us. I have talked to the mayor, I have emailed some of the commissioners here. I've done my homework, I don't get paid to be the president of HOA, but fifty-eight people have interest, a vested interest in what's going to go on in the property that's supposed to be the Meadows of Fairview. According to all the paperwork, everything's got Meadows of Fairview on it. The problem we have with this too, with Planner's Road being a private road, all that was considered to be private based on the dues that we're going to collect from the two hundred PUD homes that were supposed to be built. Well, we have fifty-eight. As you know, city of Fairview, you guys probably have some budget problems of your own. Well, when this gets approved for two hundred units and he builds fifty-eight and now he's wanting to sell the remaining land, we're stuck to pick up the tab to maintain all the drainage, all the roads and everything else. So, we're looking for the city to help us, uh, in turn, try to keep this stuff out of court system, be real with you. I mean, you know, in my opinion, I just don't understand how a master plan can be lost. You know, the deeds office doesn't have it, city doesn't have it. We met with Ms., Mr. Coleman Hayes, uh, on Monday, he has no such plan. His, his, his response to not building out the easement to the Peak property, which goes to the remaining land that he owns, is it's not a cost effective. So, he thinks he's just going to use our road to get to his property, Ms. Peak's going to use our road, but we're going to maintain the road. Doesn't work that way, we got the deeds to the property. There's such a thing as trespassing on properties, private. You know, the way I look at it, you've got a fifty-foot easement that you own, that goes to your property, you need to build it out. All these minutes reflect that easement was supposed to have been built out, it never got built out. So, we're just little people here and, and like I said, this is going to affect not just us fifty-eight, which are going to have to foot the financial burden of what goes on with this land if for some crazy reason, he does sell it to this Mr. Huff or whoever might buy this land and, uh, they build something that doesn't associate with the Meadows of Fairview, it's going to put a financial burden on us. My thing is, if, if you approve something at six phases, you get through three, you know, and you sold to fifty-eight people under one premise, I think you have an obligation to finish building what was supposed to have been built in the first place. You know, and not deviate from the original plan. It's just funny now that I started digging, we can't find a master plan, you know? According to the attorney, that's one of the most basic, because he's a developer also, he's done some developing, that's the most basic thing that's required, especially on a PUD overlay, is a master plan. You know, you're talking a two hundred-plus unit development. The other thing we discovered and, and I find it to be a conflict interest, some others may not, a lot of his sketch plans and stuff were completed by Bletso Engineering out of Dixon. We got a guy that works in codes, last name Bletso, that is related to this individual. It's a little bit of a conflict of interest, in my opinion. You know, uh, I've asked who checked to make sure the playground was completed? Who checked before they release this bond? To make sure he put the top coat on the asphalt, this and that. So, so my question is, we're just looking here today and all I'm trying to do is give the, I want all facets of the city government to be aware of what's going on. Because we're trying to avoid and want to do this the easy way. So, we're just looking for some help from, you know, being taxpayers and stuff, we don't get a lot for our money, so it's like.
Will, have you had the opportunity to research this? That'd be my first question. Second question or statement, I know in cases, because I know of another development in Fairview, that it was a PUD, but it was approved for X number of units. And some of them lots were not platted at the time. Would this be one of them situations where it was just approved for X number of units and to be done in phases?
Well, that's the big thing, where's the master plan at? Master plan doesn't that tell you, pretty much give you the whole overlay of the whole development, your master plan?
Not if it was approved like some other.
And does the PUD include multifamily? Isn't that what you're talking about, they're wanting to do?
The apartments?
Yes.
No, it, it shouldn't include apartments. I mean, the, every, everything that we have in all the minutes, this was going to be, you know, condos. Two hundred and, they're numbered out individually on this plan. Again, it's just a sketch plan and a concept plan is all they have, there's no master plan.
Do you know it was a PUD in your research? Because I don't know if the city had PUD recordings in ninety-eight.
Yes, sir, it is a PUD.
It is?
Yes, sir.
They did have it.
Did they?
We got all the deeds to, to, to the common areas. I'm original buyer here, so I know we, that particular where I bought Ryan Homes, constructed them, the rest of all them buildings back there were completed by Mr. Hayes or his son or son-in-law. But, uh, you know, we, we've had nothing but problems. You know, we're currently sinking eighteen thousand dollars into a foundation over there. We have an engineering report that shows, you know, the soil wasn't compacted and, and different things. We've had to sue him a number of times just because of the work that was done. And, and my thing is this, is, you know, uh, why weren't all these things that were in the minutes that were supposed to get done, why weren't they ever completed? Why wasn't this easement done? Why wasn't this playground completed? Uh, top coats put on the pavement and such?
Well, from our current timeline, we, as a board here, we haven't had any, no one's brought us any new plans.
Yeah.
I, I did hear somebody was surveying back there months ago, uh, but we have, we haven't approved anything, you know, recently and from my understanding.
According to Mr. Hayes, I guess Ms. Totty, the old mayor, uh, she's representing and she's the one who constructed this whole ordeal sheet. According to Mr. Hayes, he brought her, uh, she brought him the buyer, basically, and come up with the idea of selling the property for apartments.
Is it, uh, is it through Community Housing Project?
All he said is it would be affordable housing. And I asked him, well, why are we meeting? He needs basically our help because he doesn't want to build out that easement, it's too costly. He thinks he's going to use our private road and I told him, you're not using our road. It's just not going to happen.
They apply for the same grant as the housing out by the interstate, because I found it on a grant list when that one came up. They applied for the same grant as the housing out by the interstate, because I found it on a grant list when that one came up, and tried to contact, the, the developer contacted, and never got, heard anything back. But it raised, I was like, what is, you know, where did this come from? Hadn't heard anything about it.
But, uh, I believe you will, because we just met with him Monday, and like I said, he's got plans that were drawn, I've seen it, uh, December of two thousand fifteen, to include these apartments. And, and, you know, uh, we were originally supposed to be two hundred and something units. Well, by the time you put these apartments and add in everything, it's, it's, the traffic back there and that road, it just ain't designed for, you know, three hundred-plus units back there.
A, a big roadblock they'll hit, which they must not know about, is the city sewer.
Right, and I mean, they can't just...
He said he told them step.
His responses, he's tested the soil, and they're gonna do a drip system, and he's already talked to some people, I guess, up here.
Well, I mean, he can say all he wants, but until he comes before us and it's approved, it, it's not happening yet, I mean, so...
Well, I see a couple of things, and we spoke on the phone for a while, and I, um, originally is, they, they don't own the road, so if they wanna go through, um, but we spoke about if I was a original buyer, um, of the condo, which we looked at them years ago, I would be feeling the same way that he feels. I wouldn't want, I would want the original intent of the development to stay the same. So, these people bought and trusted that, you know, that was gonna happen. But what I get out of this conversation is something we, as a, um, planning commission can, um, learn from, is, um, through the past, as Mr. Biata said, none of us were, were on the planning commission, so we don't know why there's not a master plan, we don't know why, you know, things weren't followed through, and we couldn't, we could only just guess. Um, but basically, um, it is something that we could take from this and learn, and make sure that we are dotting our i's, crossing our t's. This development hasn't come in front of us, so it's real easy for us to say, um, you know, it may not, I mean, it is based on the, a grant. So, they may not get the funding, the federal funding, so there's a lot of ifs. But with you meeting with them, obviously, that is their intent, and he expressed that to you, so we'll have to take that as...
He gave us a little more information probably than he should have, about meetings and such that took place, and so, yeah, I'm a little upset with the whole ordeal, basically. And, you know, we're just taking steps now to protect us, so that's why we're laying the foundation, we're coming here, uh, letting our concerns be known, get copy of the minutes, so on and so forth. In case down the road, they say, hey, we're gonna put apartments in here, you know, and then there's gotta be some sort of action taken, because here's our thing, you know, you sell this, like I told you on the phone, you sell to fifty-eight people, and, and there's this big old plan hanging in the office that they sold to us. It's got two pools, it's got a playground, it's all approved, kinda similar to the concept plan, the sketch plans that we have. And you invest in this. Do you think any one of us fifty-eight would have invested if affordable housing was gonna go back there?
Right, I agree, I remember seeing the plans, I remember looking at the houses, I remember driving to Franklin and looking at the model home. So, I get you, I mean, I don't think that there's anything to be said, if you buy into something, then you believe that that's what you're gonna get. For us to come around and turn around and not give it, but, um, would be, you know, a crying shame.
So, all we're looking for is, uh, because, you know, administrations come and go, planning commissions come and go. This land's set vacant since, I think the last phase was done in two thousand six, so nothing's been built since, what, ten years? So, who knows if any, anybody will be around? You know, we're ready to put this thing to bed, one way or another, you know, and it's like, we want some sort of written documentation that, hey, we're either gonna hold you to this plan that, 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 that was adapted by the city years ago, uh, according to all the minutes, according to all the plaits that I have, uh, or you're gonna allow them to abandon that. And if, you know, they're allowed to all of a sudden here abandon that original plan, well, that becomes a problem.
I can't believe, um, Ryan Holmes couldn't provide, um, you know, if we've lost it, did you contact them?
The deeds office doesn't have it, the developer doesn't have it, uh, you guys don't have it. And according to the attorney, you know, he looked at everything, and he's like, you shouldn't even have been sold your homes, if there's no master plan. So, basically, you know, he, he's wondering how we even got our homes sold to us when there's no master plan. Because he said it's a PUD overlay. One of the most basic things, he said, is required, is, is, is the master plan. I'm not a builder, obviously, uh, and, and that's why we went to hell and hell out of Franklin, they're a pretty good respectable law firm that deals with real estate and such. Because I guess he does some developing of his own, he's sat on planning commissions before, and he's well-versed in a lot of rules. And he's, he's doing a lot of this just to help us, you know, we just want our rights protected, our investments protected, uh, you know, we just want what we were promised, that's all. You know, like I said, we gotta maintain all them roads, it was based off two hundred units. I mean, how do you expect us to maintain road sewer system, fifty-eight people?
Um, I do wanna, uh, set the record straight, just because of the, um, insinuation that, uh, Mr. Bletso, I don't even know that Mr. Bletso was here when this subdivision, um, took place. And I'm not sure that he is related to, um, an engineer, um, and, and he is in Dixon, he is, okay. Well, I just wanna clarify that, and I don't know what faces...
No, no insinuations being made, I was stating...
Well, just, just to piggyback on that, first of all, when it's, when it's an engineering thing that you're talking to, Bletso wouldn't inspect that anyway. Our own engineer would be the one inspecting that. Bletso just solely inspects buildings.
Here's what I'm trying to say, we had to file lawsuits, because simple code requirements weren't met inside the buildings when they were inspected, and said, hey, your codes are up to date. We got the, the lawsuit that was filed over that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just simply commenting on your Bletso and Bletso comment, because...
Just, just like the playground...
Some people can take that, and it'll be, Facebook will be blowed up.
Well, my thing is this, you know, the playground, who inspected that to make sure that was completed? There was a bond, it was released, if, if I'm not mistaken, did he work with it?
You have a comment, Larry?
Yes, normally, uh, I don't think I was here then, but normally, what the city requires a bond for is those amenities that are relevant to the city, i.e. the streets, sidewalks, curbs and gutters, that type of thing. And if this was going to be, uh, the city does not bond, that the, that the, uh, development will be built in accordance with the plans, the specification. Now, the city does inspect the buildings to see that they meet codes, but they don't inspect, uh, we don't bond the building. If, if it doesn't meet codes, then you don't issue a use and occupancy permit. But we don't bond anything that's, any of the amenities there, clubhouses, uh, swimming pools, that type of thing, it's just the streets. Now, once, of course, once these streets were never turned over to the city, uh, because, pardon...
They were never intended to...
No, they were private, they were private streets, so we'd have to pull the documents and see what was bonded. Uh, I'd like to see if we pull the zoning and see what it's actually zoned for. Because I sit here right now, I don't know if it's even zoned for anything other than what's there, to say it's a, a PUD overlay, and I have no reason to doubt that. But I don't have any documents to tell me that's what it is. How was it zoned? Was it zoned to be PUD Phase One, PUD Phase Two, PUD Phase Three, and this is something later? Because if it was, there is a document that's on file in the registrar's office for Phase One, Two, and Three. I have not seen an overall master plan, but if you look at the zoning requirements, uh, how it was zoned, it might, it might not. It might give us some information as to how this thing was set up, uh, because if it was zoned for, for the whole thing being an R twenty, uh, PUD overlay, then it should say that in the zoning document. The other thing is, if it was zoned for multiple housing, it, it may have been zoned for duplexes or whatever's in there. And if it is, not only would you have to, can't keep the man selling his property, I mean, because if anybody wants to, but he can't go in here and, and build something without this, uh, without approvals here. And if it's not zoned for that, unless that zoning gets changed, it's not gonna happen. Now, the other thing that I would, would want to say, this board, nor the Board of Commissioners, can give you a document that says this will never be changed. That's contract legislation, it's void on its face. But this board, or a future board, and a future Board of Commissioners, and a future planner, or whatever, you know, if, all you can do is deal with what is, if he comes in, or anybody comes in and says, I bought this, I wanna build four hundred apartments back there, then you're gonna have to look at the documents and say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna rezone that, it's not zoned for that, uh, we're not gonna approve that. You can't give them the right to drive over private roads, I mean, it's, it's just not ours. That would be inverse condemnation, you'd have to buy the whole place. You know, you couldn't do it in the first place, but if you attempted it, you would be interfering with people's right to contract and a whole bunch of other things that I think of. But I just wanted to put that out there as a learning point, and just to clarify something, the city does not ever bond, that that development will be built in accordance with the plans for the development. They do, do a codes inspection, just like the electrical inspector comes out and blah, blah, this, although he may not be from City of Fairview, he's probably the state. But they come out and check those things, and if it doesn't meet standards, you don't get a use and occupancy permit. Generally, the developer goes back and corrects it, because he wants to get his money. But I just wanna put that out there for...
Yeah, I... But what I was referencing to, and he states it in his letter to Mr. Lake Cantrell, about the master pen, plan being, being referenced many, many times in the minutes we have, many, many times. So, if it's being referenced in all the minutes, and everything keeps referring to the master plan, where'd the master plan go? I mean...
I, I would say, I think you're, you're very good to be on top of this and, and being diligent. The, the developer could say, you know, what his intentions are till, till he turns red, but, I mean, he's got a lot of hoops to jump through.
That's right.
And the biggest one being the sewer, he, if he says onsite, I mean, that's a, that's a, he needs a minimum of sixteen acres for two hundred homes, and it has to be sixteen good acres. So, I mean, he's got a, a lot a, ahead of him, and including coming in front of this board and discussing it.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, it doesn't matter what he says.
But I do appreciate you putting us on call and bringing this to our attention, because it, it is very, I, I, I understand, you know, where you're coming from, and it is very disconcerting. You know, if, like you said, you invested in a vision, and with the PUD and everything, that, um, you know, I, I definitely applaud your work. I know it's, uh, you know, I know it's a lot to do, since it's about your job, but...
Well, my other question is, that I have, you know, the stuff that was referenced in the minutes about the easement and the, and the playground? Who oversees it? I mean, if you guys told them, hey, this is supposed to be here, and this is supposed to be built out, and they never did it, who enforces that?
Let, let's do this, so we don't, let's don't, actual stuff we don't have knowledge of. Let's defer this.
I can bring all the minutes and plaits.
Let's defer this and give our city engineer and our staff and our engineer time to research this briefly, and get us all up to speed, so we're, we have a little bit of knowledge of what we're talking about.
The key term you used there is briefly, that's not gonna be the case, I can tell you that right now.
Whatever it takes.
So, my, my suggestion is either direct us to do it now, or let's, let's wait till we actually have a submittal in front of us.
Wait until we actually...
Because, I mean, we can speculate all of it.
Until he brings us something that we could discuss, as far as the developer...
Can you take action on something you don't have?
This is, it's premature until something is brought before us, and when it's brought before us, then the research will be done so that we can make an educated, you know...
My point for deferral is if they were supposed to put in some of this stuff, and they didn't, let's see if they were supposed to do it by our standards, or if that's just something they put in their amenities for their development, not a city requirement. Uh, and, you know, some research, you could turn that stone over pretty quick, or maybe not pretty quick, but, and that would give them knowledge, us knowledge of, has the staff missed something that was supposed to be done, that wasn't done, that we required, or is that just something that he was selling y'all as some of the amenities?
Yes, sir, and, and that's the thing, we're, we're just trying to rectify whatever, you know, in our opinion, there's a lot of things that were done wrong, uh, but we're not here to point fingers, we're here to protect our interests, and if some things were missed, they were missed. You know, we're trying to avoid any sort of legal problems, or this or that. We're just preparing in the event it gets to that point. You know, and, and like I said, nobody wants that, it's costly, you know, and, and, and... My thing is, it's just, we're trying to settle it and make everybody in the government that relates to the City of Fairview aware of this issue. So, if that time comes, and we do have to send this to the court, you know, we've been on record here, we've done here, we've done here, we've done all we can.
Who's the developer on this project, original?
John Coleman Hayes is the original developer, which he's actually was gonna do the one down here on ninety-six, he told us, but I guess he foregoed that, and he, he told us a whole lot of stuff when we met with him on Monday, basically.
You put us on notice, and it will be looked at, at the time it's presented.
Yes, sir.
Thoroughly.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. How do you go about getting a meeting with your commissioners? I've, I've also inquired about that, you know, to get, is that just something you gotta come in and just have five minutes, or, you know, because we wanna make everybody aware of it?
Well, two commissioners are on our planning commission right here, so you've made them aware.
Because the thing is, we know definitely, if, if he doesn't do something with the land, he's selling it, so something's gonna get done with the land, so...
But when he sells it, and that something would have to come before this board...
I got you.
It just can't, he just can't buy it and say, well, this is what I'm gonna do, and just do it, it's gotta come before the board.
Well, here's the thing, I don't, I don't do this kind of work, so this is a learning process.
Right.
This is a different profession, and, and Mr. Hall, I've talked to him, he's been pretty helpful with me, getting me documents and things. But see, the thing is, we're just, we've been told so many things, and this property's been up in the air, and it's back and forth, back and forth. You know, we're just ready to deal with this and get it behind us. And by meeting with him yesterday, it's apparent that that land, something's getting ready to get, he, he's even had the soil tested, he thinks he's gonna put a drip system back there.
Well...
I mean, that's, you know, a whole nother ballgame.
We understand the concern of your community, but understand that...
What you can and can't do.
Right, this would, this all would have to come before us.
Okay, and, and like I said, this was just simply making you guys aware, because we don't know...
You've done a great, you've done a great job researching and...
And at that point, you will definitely be able to come back in front of us and express it again, yeah.
Because we don't... We don't know if the, you know, my big fear too, they put the stuff in the observer when they have these things, we don't know whose name it'll be listed, if he sells it, you know. So, I just wanted to make people aware, so something don't get snuck without us knowing, you know, we live right over here, Mr. Hall has our number. Anything goes on with that property, we would love to be made aware of, so we can have some sort of representation.
Well, there's four of us just looking it up on our smartphones, and we know exactly.
And like I said, it, you know, again, I'm not pointing fingers, it's just exploratory at this point, you know, just trying to make everybody aware, and, and we're begging the city to help us, and, and that's where we stand. So, I appreciate your time and your efforts, sir.
Can I have something to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I think, don't you have thirty-four blocks behind Swimming Pool that's already approved? That he could build on? Y'all showed me over there the other day, is it thirty-four?
No, the only thing that he currently has is I think he's got one or two sewer taps left, that's it.
That's it.
Phase three.
Okay, if, if he does come back in to build those...
Yes, sir.
You can't bond that road, if there's any damage done to it, uh, where that he would have to take care of, but he would, you can't bond that road, okay?
Yeah, that, that's gonna be a whole nother issue, because that, that's the thing, he thinks he's gonna use planners to run his trucks down to get to his land, and I tried to tell him, you got a fifty-foot ingress, regress that you gotta build out. He says to me, well, that's too costly. Look, that's not my problem, that's your problem.
But if he starts coming down through there with construction equipment, put a stop to it.
I've already let some folks know.
Just give me a call.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine. Reports for discussion and information. Nine point one, Director of Planning and Codes, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair Farson, and the rest of the board of Planning Commissioners. Recently, we've had a public hearing, and it's regarding the, um, the... Uh, recently, we've had a public hearing, and it's regarding the, um, the uncertainty of the sand filter systems on, uh, certain neighborhoods. Uh, I actually haven't talked to Will yet, but I did talk to the mayor about having, uh, the presentation again of the sand filter system construction, and talked to Michael Rogers last night with the, with the, uh, water authority of Dixon, if he would also come again and bring their, their steps of, uh, maintenance inspections and this type thing. And, uh, if Will's willing, we'll, we'll get a time set, and we'll try to get the word out a little more to citizens this time, as well as planning commission and the board of commissioners, but I think it's, uh, instrumental that we go forward with educating our citizens further about this, uh, and, uh, I will try to arrange that and get it set up for us, and I think Mayor you is, uh, one, it was really a component of having this done, so, uh, I, I, I think we could, it needs to be done, and we'll try to get as many people here as possible, and I'll make it convenient with Will when we do it. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I don't have a, uh, commissioner's comment tonight, but, Sharon just advised me that we need to make sure y'all bring back the deferred plans that you have already tonight, uh, such as this one, if y'all will, kinda hold on to those, or it would save Sharon a lot of work. Okay, so that's all I have, something.
But, leave it here for-
That's what I was gonna say, is there a locker or something we can do?
I got enough at home, I don't need anymore.
Sharon, I'm sure you have room on your desk.
Sharon, we'll put it on your desk. There you go, Sharon. I like the size of the smaller ones, by the way. Yeah, that is nice.
Uh, you've got young eyes, it's rough.
Well, I've got an eyeball that I can bring, it's really cool, it magnifies things like 10 times, it's great, you just run it over the plans, I used it when I was in the field. City engineer, Mr. Owen?
I don't have anything.
9.3, city attorney, Mr. Cantrell?
I have nothing further than that, thank you.
Thank you. 9.4, Mr. Hall?
He's outta here.
Okay.
He, he said I could say something. I just wanted to thank you all for, uh, coming tonight for the workshop session to, to gain more knowledge in, in regards to the park dedication. Again, it's, uh, it's very important that you folks learn as much as you can, so when you're looking at these plans, you have, you have, you have a worldly view of, not worldly, but a whole view of, of development and what the city, where the city's going, and, um, also, you're gonna be dangerous, because you'll know more. So, and also, that, um, hour counts as training, so, I was talking with Sharon, and she kinda asked that each one of you keep track of your hours, so at the end of the year, she'll, uh, collect them then, so, I think, I think you had four or five on, on that, at Montgomery Bell, so-
Right. Uh, won't this also, when we review this sand drip system, again, be able to count as, as training again, 'cause it was last year, I think, whenever we did the first one?
It should, sure.
Okay.
We need four hours, correct?
Four hours.
Four hours. So, Mr. Loman, you're done. Uh, number 10, communication from the planning commission members. Mr. Loman?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mayor Carroll?
Um, yeah, I just wanna say quickly, I think some of this is what I've kinda said along, is, it's, it's so important we get our job right, and I know it's, you know, hard, um, to get it right, but just because there will be other boards having to refer back to what we're working on, and try to decipher what we meant, or what the intentions, and whether things are getting followed through or not, um, this is just another example of why we need to make sure that we're following up and making sure that people aren't buying in our community, and we're not enforcing what they bought into. So I think that's really important, and as far as, I'm, I'm anxious to see the minutes and review the tape, um, because, you, you know, we may have just been-
Duped.
Duped, and that's how I feel about it, and I can't wait to see what the minutes as far as, um, you know, because never would I want to throw out what the engineer recommended or, um, what the planning commission, um, was wanting, so if that's the case, you know, I definitely need to evaluate, um, what was said and how we were, um, told, and how we came to the conclusion. So, I guess the main thing is, you know, to me, what's important is, we're all gonna make mistakes, but are we gonna learn from them, are we gonna make them right? Um, I hate for this development to have to go away and come back again, but I just couldn't feel good about, um, voting on this tonight, knowing that not remembering enough time passing exactly what we thought we were passing, so. With that being said, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mangram?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Sutton?
Uh, the only thing I-
Hightower, sorry.
Sorry. Uh, the only thing I'd like to say is, you know, this is, if this is what it is, and there's no recourse to come back on it, I, Wayne, I'd like for you to put on, for the board of commissioners, uh, to discuss and or take action on having the city engineer available for any putts that are brought before the board of commissioners. Um, I, I, also, at that time, I don't think we should be getting anything that's not the original, that was planned, that was approved by the planning commission.
I, I just cannot believe that.
But, but that's, that's hindsight. Orside, we can have him here, and he will have a comments, and we'll know what's, what's what on it, so, can you put that on there, on the agenda for that for next week? Okay, that's all I've got, thank you.
Mr. Butler?
At the tree board meeting last week, we set up a, uh, workshop with the planning commission, if you guys decide to accept for next month, um, to, to, to discuss the role of the tree board as it, as, as it goes with the, pertains to the planning commission, and so, just thought I'd mention that. And I don't know if Mr. Hall can give me a little further, I don't know if we're going to direct Mr. Owen to try and help us better establish that role to help determine, we'll probably be really excited.
Do you need a office wheel?
I, I think that also, and then Larry will be here also, and I think there's some issues where we need to address private property that we're not supposed to be out on, so, uh, Larry can address those issues too.
Are you talking about at the workshop, or, I wanna bet you I said-
Yes, yes, at the workshop, next month.
Mr. Butler, I'd be glad to do that, um, with the understanding that it is not my opinion that would be given as far as what their role is, the only, my only information would be gathered directly from what you've currently adopted in ordinances, uh, and how those ordinances define the responsibilities and roles of the tree board. My opinion would be far removed from any of that discussion.
And just some reference, there's some questions about what their role is, how the role works, and are we following it correctly, and, um, I think it'll just help, just to try and make sure we establish that we're following the way it's intended to, and if we're not, and they want it to work a different way, we need to try and explore getting that approved and what we gotta do.
I'd also like to ask, that'd be extended to the board of commissioners, uh, to be, to be there if they would like to be there, but I think it would be important.
Well, and a lot of it came about, um, just because, um, um, something was caught that because it didn't come in front of the planning commission, I mean, it didn't follow the process of the tree board approving going to the, that there's, um, potential trouble on one of the lots and where damage, um, you know, and soils, you know, potential problems, so, we just need to relook at the role, it just goes to show you that there, it was put in place for a reason, and because we, whatever reason, tried to bypass some of it, things are getting missed, and it was a suggestion that the board and planning commission can come together, and then also with Will, and review, um, you know, the process. What were you, were you gonna say something?
I disagree with you.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Begada?
Yeah, there, um, there was, uh, two items that, um, may or may not have, uh, been discussed on the codes review board, but I'd like to add them to our agenda for next month. Uh, one is a discussion, which it was kinda brought up tonight a little bit, but the discussion on the need for fencing around detention ponds, uh, I was on the board several years ago when we put that into place for commercial, and, uh, seeing it applied in a few instances, I kinda want us to discuss really why we're doing it, is it, you know, just kind of looking at it, 'cause I, I think, uh, there's some potentials there, but I'll be happy, I've got, I've been brewing, uh, you know, in my head here, so, I'll be bringing pictures and kind of a little packet to discuss, um, and then the second one, uh, item I'd like to add is discussion on potential restrictions and guidelines for digital signs. Um, this has been, again, something years ago that we were really close on, as a board, and just for reasons of how things go, I mean, it's almost like a flowing river here where, you know, things, things get swept downstream very quickly, and I'd like to pick that up and just have a, a good discussion on that, and again, um, I'll be bringing some examples and, and, um, you know, I think that's an area we should discuss, so. And then, uh, beyond that, you know, just another good meeting, I, I really, again, feel we're getting better staff-wise and board-wise with, with every, um, every meeting and every discussion, and, uh, trying to continue to close those areas, those potential gray areas or, or oversight areas, that's all.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to thank the two citizens who've hung with us, this has been a, a nice long meeting, but I think, um, I think it's important because we have found, you know, situations that are really, it, it excites me that this board is together, because I think that we genuinely care, we've got a great planning commission, we've got a great staff, we're all working together to make sure that things in the, of the past are not repeated, and that's what's most important, to protect the citizens. Um, I just wanna say, uh, to make sure that you shop here first, keep your money in Fairview, and help our community, uh, grow and succeed. Thank you.